Mrs. Cunha?
Here.
Mrs. Di Benedetto?
Present.
Mrs. Crass?
Here.
Mrs. Mistone here.
Mr. Scarry? Present.
Mrs. Van de Clu, present? Present, seven present and none absent. All please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, approval of amended minutes of April 3rd, 2017. Motion for approval by Ms. Cunha, seconded by Mr. Scarry. All those in favor? All those opposed? April 3rd meeting?
I just wanted to say thank you for making those changes and for adding it to the list. But I just want to make sure that people realize is that we voted to buy and purchase those. So if the ambulance company doesn't purchase those food, we need them for this.
They have ordered them. We just don't have a date of delivery yet.
Oh, great, thank you.
Approval of the minutes of April 24th, 2017. Motion for approval by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Cunha. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of bills, transfer of funds. Motion for approval by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Mr. Benedetto. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Approval of payrolls. Motion for approval by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Van de Clu. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Report of the secretary.
There is none.
Report of committees. Community participation. Hearing and seeing none. Report of superintendent. Report on Connors Scholarship Program. Mr. Superintendent.
Mayor and members of the school committee, you have heard undoubtedly about the Connors Scholarship Program. It was created through the generosity of James and Thelma Connors. You've got the information in front of you. People of modest means, or apparently of modest means until the very end when their investments became available to the city and through the work of Attorney John Granara, former Mayor Mike McGlynn, and Stephen Andrew. It was put together into a scholarship program. Amelia Jensen is here, our Director of Guidance, and she is, you know, reaching out to students to apply for this program. The details are here and happy to answer any questions you have rather than go through it. But it's obviously a very generous activity and we're pleased to have it.
Ms. Jensen.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Burke, Superintendent Bellson, and members of the school committee. We had a pretty successful turnout for students applying for the scholarship. While we don't know exact final numbers, since we do not collect the scholarship applications, we've had between fifty to sixty students ask counselors for the recommendation forms to be filled out. So we expect at least fifty or sixty students to apply for the scholarship. It's a wonderful scholarship. There, like Mr. Bellson said, there are thirty-three thousand dollar scholarships that could go to Medford students. So we're really hoping that many from Medford High School will be able to be awarded.
Excellent. Mr. Scarry? You believe in him? No? Okay. Ms. Van de Clu.
This is such a wonderful thing. It's almost, it's like a dream come true for our Medford students. Obviously, we can express our appreciation to Jim and Thelma Connors, but we certainly owe them a huge debt of thanks for our students. And I appreciate all the people who are working on this to make sure that it is administered correctly and that our students will benefit. I do hope that we receive a list of all the students who receive them.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto.
I just want to thank your office for taking on this responsibility and getting this information out to our students. I hope, I hope it helps a lot of, you know, students that normally wouldn't get a high-end scholarship because the GPA is very reasonable and it's for the average, working, hard student. And I'm really glad to see that.
One of the, yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your office and your help.
You're welcome. One of, one of the things that was really exciting about this scholarship is although they look at academic record and demonstrated leadership, they also look at work experience and any type of hardships that students have overcome. And they weigh those things somewhat equally. So some of our students who may have had to take a job to help support family or take care of their siblings aren't going to be ruled out for this scholarship.
Excellent.
Amazing.
Ms. Crass?
Oh, hi. Thank you, Ms. Jensen. This is a great report. I don't want to duplicate what Erin said, but I was going to say that, you know, I thought it was a really fair grade point average where it ranged from two-point-three to higher levels, which is, you know, good for some students who might not, you know, be at the same grade level as others. And it's just a wonderful, generous opportunity for our students. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you.
Ms. Cunha.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen, to you and to your staff for being involved in this. I hope, though, that as the students are applying for this scholarship, they really understand how they're receiving this money. I think there's a huge lesson here. This is just, it's an incredible story. It really is. And for people that are listening and maybe don't know the whole story, the bottom line is that we had two people in our own city that lived very modestly and have now given, you know, they were over, what? The modest life yields four million dollars. That's a huge lesson. And the lesson I hope that our students get from this, and for everyone actually that listens, is this is why you always treat everybody equally. Because you just don't know what happens and what's underneath anything. And to read this story, it was just a fabulous story. I actually shared it a little bit today with some people that I work with. And they were, they said, I hope the city really promotes this story. Because not only what they have done, but also to give the opportunity to all students. Because sometimes students don't feel that they could apply for all scholarships. And this is something really tremendous. But I thank you.
It is wonderful.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to receive and place on file?
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded by Ms. Di Benedetto, seconded by Ms. Van de Clu. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Report on class of 2017 college/university acceptances. Mr. Superintendent.
Making a return appearance is Amelia Jensen to tell you about the college acceptances to date. This is still preliminary, but we wanted to give you a sense of what was happening out there for the time being.
Yes, so the students inform the guidance department their deadline is May 11th. And they inform us of all of the places that they were accepted, as well as where they have chosen to go and their post-secondary plans. So right now, again, this is preliminary numbers, but we've had two-hundred-and-twenty students report that they have been accepted to over two-hundred-and-twenty-five different colleges and universities. And there should be an attachment that lists all of the colleges and universities. I did want to highlight a few because this was an exceptional year. We have had a student get into Brown University, Duke University, Harvard, Tufts University, Wellesley College, Yale University, all of the UMass schools, and many, many state schools, and many more schools that you can look at on the attached sheet. We also have some students who are waitlisted at some pretty good schools, so we're still waiting to hear if they have been accepted. Decision day is May 1st, so students will be making that decision, or should have already made that decision, and again, should be letting us know where they're going. So that was the, that's where we stand with colleges. Many students also have received scholarships and awards already. We had one student who became a national merit finalist. One student won a Pasi Scholarship, which is a full-ride scholarship. And this student will be attending Bucknell University. We had a student receive a full-ride scholarship to Duke University because of soccer, one to Tufts University because of academics, and many more. So again, those are also, that's also a list that we will be collecting. Two Medford vocational technical students are currently enrolled in apprenticeship programs at night to become plumbers. So what they're doing is they're already a year ahead of their peers, so they're going to school during the day and at night. So that is also very exceptional. And this was the first year that many students, I believe over thirty-five students, have chosen alternative post-secondary plans and options for their future. And by this, what I mean is these are students who have below a two-point-five GPA and historically would not have been accepted to a four-year school. So they would have gone to community college or they would have chosen some other route. Instead of that, we were able to offer them other programs and opportunities through the Rockland Earn and Learn Program, Year Up, Match Beyond, and many more. And what these programs offer is work experience and scholarships to go to college. And I can go into more detail if you have specific questions on this.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Cunha.
Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. Jensen, for this report. Again, extremely proud of our students. And I just encourage, I know that we did it last year for the graduation pamphlet, if we could add this on to the graduation pamphlet again.
Absolutely.
And maybe even a little bit of the, you know, we're many, we're the students that received a couple of scholarships. Just to give an idea. And the reason I say that is that we had had this discussion, I was on the site council for the high school and the vocational school for many years. And what happened is that our students do get accepted to great schools. But sometimes, because of financial reasons, they, they choose other schools. And I heard people in the audience that were saying, oh, our Medford students are all going to this school or that school. And I'm not saying that one school is better than the other. But they were leaving the graduation just thinking that our students were going to particular schools. And when I, when we approached it, we said, it's not fair to the students. Because parents or relatives that come, or people that just come to the graduation or just see where our students end up going doesn't necessarily mean that's where they've only been accepted to. So I think it's very important for the school, but also for the students, to, to let people know how hard they've worked and where they've been accepted to.
Yes, we definitely plan on putting that on the graduation booklet. I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Benedetto.
Just out of curiosity, do you know how many students have been accepted to Tufts University this year?
Seven to nine?
The last?
Seven or nine.
Yeah, the last time I heard, I thought it was seven, but it could have, there could be more.
I think there were seven accepted and there were multiple waitlists.
Okay. So we're still waiting to hear on this.
But you know, I really, since we have one of, one of the best colleges in the world here in our city, I really like that partnership with Tufts University. And I know that they look closely at taking both Medford and some of the students. So I'm just always curious as to how many get accepted and then how many can afford to go after that. And I know that Tufts can be generous at times with our student, having a daughter who graduated from there. But also because I want to keep that opportunity for our, our children and our, in our community. I mean, it's a great, it's like a world-renowned school now, and it's got people from all over the world coming.
Yes, they've been working very well with our department. They reach out to us monthly. They ask for names of students who are on the honor society, and they do personal outreach to our students. So they're very good with our, with our population.
Thank you.
Mr. Scarry.
Has the guidance office been apprised of any students who received substantial scholarships to go to their schools?
Not yet. So they'll fill that information out when they get their graduation caps and gowns, which is mid-May.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Ms. Van de Clu.
No, I just, it's always nice to see the list. It's particularly nice to see that we've got a student accepted into Yale this year. Because that's a, it's a very difficult school to have an acceptance. So I was particularly happy to see that a Medford student had made it to Yale.
Yeah, it's been, I think it's been a while since that's happened.
It has been.
Very good. Is a motion to receive and place on file by Mr. Scarry, seconded by Ms. Cunha? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Report on opioid prevention grant. Mr. Superintendent.
So I think we all realize that the opioid issue is becoming very, very substantial. It has been very substantial. The Massachusetts amount of opiate exceeds the national average. So for opioid deaths and the like. And it affects marriages, affects jobs, families, neighborhoods, and all kinds of, of things out there that, that are not good. So through the work of Tony and Rachel, we have another grant. And I'll let them explain it because I think it's a really good item for us right now.
Very good. Ms. Vento.
Good evening, Mayor Burke, Superintendent, and school committee members. Rachel and I are here to talk about the Youth Opioid Prevention Grant. This grant was funded by a settlement with CVS and Walgreen over fraudulent practices around opioid prescriptions. And Attorney General Maury Healy used five-hundred thousand dollars to fund the program. And they were looking for programs that would address the opioid addiction and dependence and programs that would be sustainable. So we're, we're very happy that, to announce that we were awarded eighteen thousand dollars for our programs here to augment the many different things we've been doing. But we're really focusing now on building skills, as Rachel will talk about, with our younger elementary students.
All right, so we're looking to use the grant funding kind of a four-pronged approach. First, education of our students, education of our faculty, education of our parents, and education of our community. The first thing we're looking to do is purchase more Michigan model kits. At this point, we have kits at the elementary schools, but they are shared between the teachers. By using this money, we can purchase one kit for every teacher so that they all have all of their own kits, all of their own information. We'd also like to provide yearly parent education forums about substance use and prevention. Would also like to do faculty training on identification of substance use, risky behaviors, and preventative strategies. That would be a yearly training that we would offer. Increasing community awareness by having resources for education and student support actually posted on our, our school website, our health website, that will help people in the community that are looking for information. And then strengthening our partnerships with community organizations, the youth soccer leagues, the youth basketball leagues, working with their coaches to actually teach them some of the information within the Michigan model so they can share it with, with their athletes and with their parents as well. We all, we will be assessing the program as well. We're going to actually start to look at the survey results for the Communities That Care surveys. We can compare, make a comparison, 2017 and 2019, to see what we have done, see if it has made a difference within the survey results. And we'll also be assessing each program. We'll have surveys after each program is done to kind of assess how it went, and we'll be going from there. And then we'll also be doing pre and post-assessments of the Michigan model.
Very good. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Eighteen thousand dollars towards educational services regarding drug addiction in any way, shape, or form is money coming in. And we don't, I'm really happy to see that they've allocated funds throughout the community and we were recipient of such a large sum. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about working with Penny from the city side because she's
from the city side, because she's amazing, and her department is amazing.
They do work very closely down.
So, so she might have some, you know, ideas?
Penny sat on the planning board for this, when we wrote this grant.
Great.
So, we were able to, you know, listen to her feedback about it, and she was very helpful in, for us, in, in putting together the application.
Okay.
They, they also funded our parent forum with Dr. Ruth Potte that we had a couple weeks ago. So, so we were very pleased to, to be able to do that for our community.
My, my other only suggestion is, as far as the community piece, we have a group in the community, Medford Against Addiction, and it's really well-run and well-developed, and they really have their hands on what's happening in our community. So, I, I would reach out to that group as well. I mean, they're phenomenal, and they're very receptive and very helpful. And my last, my last piece is for the parents. I know that Cheryl just received an award.
Citizen of the Year?
Citizen of the Year, and she won, I've attended her, I've been to her group to observe what goes on there, and it's for the parents of people who are addicted, and everybody thinks it's the older, it could also be students within our, just, and it's, you know, and see, you know, just get that perspective as well. So, you're getting both the school, the city side, the, the, the great program, Medford Against Addiction, which brings people together, make them feel like a family, and you're also getting adults that are, are struggling with, "How do I cope with this?" type of thing. So, we could really, you know, unite as one with, I know it's only 18,000, but that's, that's a good amount of money, and it's just some different ideas. Because if you do an outreach, speak to the people that you're going to outreach to, the parents, the people in the citizen's street, et cetera. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, just want to add a couple of comments that I just heard it's a start. It's, it's way beyond a start.
Yeah.
We've been spending a lot of money, a lot of commitment to this topic from the city perspective, and I know that Penny and her team, there's quite a few that are part of her team now, and they do outreach, they do coaching, they connect people with beds if, if need be, to get them in for treatment, and the post. So, there's a lot going on, and I know you've been working closely with them as it is, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Good grant.
One more thing, Mayor Burke?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, sorry.
Can she just finish?
Yep.
So, I also, about two years ago, the governor had people come out to the community, and I went to a few of the meetings, they were in Somerville, and they were trying to figure out what the state needed to do as a team, and they, they were talking about mandates for schools and stuff, and I rose my hand, and I was like, "Are they going to be funded mandates, or are they going to be burden to the cities?" And I was assured that, of course, they would be funded mandates, but I haven't seen those mandates yet, and I was wondering if the Superintendent had gotten any mandates yet from?
Funded mandates.
Or unfunded.
The word "fun" is, is not really a good way to begin the word "funded."
Or even unfunded. Are there any new mandates within the school district?
There'll be several.
But they haven't come out yet. The governor was doing-
They're starting to emerge right now, because I think the biggest thing you have to understand, there's a lot of things coming up, but they're always underfunded.
Under.
You know what I mean? So, there, there's a few dollars put to them, but then there's not enough to really carry them out. You'll see some of the, the budget report that we're going to talk about.
Right, and I mean, one of them recently was the expert screening, that the training was funded for, but we were able to conduct the screening at no cost to the district, just using our resources that we have in the health services and Guidance Counseling Departments.
Very good.
And I want to advocate for our community member that if we do have mandates from DESU or from the governor's office, that he demands that they fund the program, so the school districts have a way to run them well, and to make them the best that they can be, so they actually can help our city.
Ms. Vandecoot?
I just want to thank you both for writing the grant. I wanted to, since you mentioned her, Tony, that I know Mrs. Kretz and myself were able to attend Dr. Ruth Potte's talk, which was just exceptional. Everybody in the audience, who, and I've talked to people since, have said it was one of the best things that they've attended. I hope that at some point, we might be able to bring her back again. She truly was, it was a wonderful event, and I'm so glad that I was able to attend.
Thank you. I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Ms. Kretz?
Yep, I wanted to mention that I went to the, to the forum, you know, when Paul and I, and it was just amazing, and she was a great, great speaker, and everybody was so engaged. It was wonderful. This is a great grant. It's just terrific. And I love how there's going to be more parent forums, and more facility training, increased community awareness. And I just wanted to make sure, because I know when the original grant was written, the expenses added up to 20,000, so I wanted to make sure that there was going to be enough funding available, or if you had to add something to the budget this year, so that you could, you know, continue with the new teacher training in prevention, the presentations. I wasn't sure if, you know, was this like, kind of a little bit of an estimate, or, or do you think you'll find out?
We cut, no, this was, this is the grant, the total that we will receive, but we looked through, and we were able to slim down on some administrative costs.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that you get to, you know, put through everything that you want to put through, because it's so wonderful.
The most important piece of it, the Michigan Model Kits, we kept, because that, that really starts building the foundation at the kindergarten level.
Yep.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunio?
I just want to say again, as my colleagues have said, thank you for your hard work and for getting us this grant. I know that you have collaborated with different organizations. I'm just curious to knowing, I know that the City Council has their meetings once a month with the police chief and the police department, and they're going from one community, well, one part of our city to another. And I was just curious if, if it was something that you guys have ever attended, maybe just to get the word out of when you're going to have a parent meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we, we attended and did a presentation a couple of years ago at a City Council meeting. I also attend a monthly National Alliance of Mental Illness meeting that is held at the police station, so we share a lot of ideas at that monthly meeting. Stacy Schulman also attends with me from the school side.
This wasn't necessarily just to show it to the City Council, but where they're having their meetings in the different sections of the city, I know your schedules are, you know, they're piled as it is, but just to like, you don't have to stay there the whole night, but just to get the word out, maybe, when they do have their meetings, of giving them the information of what you're working on, maybe the next time you are having a parent meeting, or, you know, when you're scheduling a yearly meeting, just to, even if you could bring a flyer, or, or just give it to the chief and have him bring it to those meetings, just to get the word out again.
Police chief has been having community meetings the first Wednesday of every month, ongoing for years and years and years. What he's done differently now is, he's actually going into the neighborhoods to host them, so people, a little more localized, but I believe it's Wednesday night at 6:00 at the Senior Center.
This, this week it's going to be, tomorrow night?
Senior Center at 6:00, Wednesday.
Wednesday, today's Tuesday, sorry.
All right, motion to receive this report and place on file by Mr. Benedetto, seconded by Ms. Kretz. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Recommendation to approve school committee meeting schedule for the school year 1718. Superintendent?
It's in front of you. It's a standard schedule.
Is a motion on the floor for approval, seconded by Ms. Mustone. Roll call?
Mrs. Cunio?
Yes.
Mr. Benedetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Kretz?
Yes.
Mrs. Mustone?
Yes.
Mr. Scarry?
Yes. Seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes. Recommendation to reject school choice, school year 1718. Motion for approval by Ms. Vandecoot, seconded by Ms. Cunio. All those, roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Cunio?
Yes.
Mr. Benedetto?
Yes.
Mrs. Kretz?
Yes.
Mrs. Mustone?
Yes.
Mr. Scarry?
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes. Report on Tech Edge Technology Study. Mr. Superintendent?
So, this report we commissioned earlier this year to get us a robust look at our network and all the infrastructure that's necessary to support the expanded use of technology in the schools, and what you have is, I think, a very thorough report. It gives us some pathways to pursue and strengthen our capacities to use technology efficiently. It also enables us to access our Tier 2 funding in support of upgrades. These reports, as, you know, I mentioned, are very technical and extensive, but they're provided to you so that you can take your time to go through them, and perhaps, you know, develop a deeper understanding of the complexity it will take to integrate technology into our programs in the public schools. The recommendation provides several key steps that we can take without a burdensome cost. Some of these things are just doable, we just have to do them. And still is important for us to recognize that there are heavy requirements of testing, state reporting, electronic data management, communication requires, we have finely tuned, robust, and reliable capacity to meet our obligations. And also, while it's not part of this report, some staffing that has to be done, so that we can maintain these systems the way we need to. This is not a one-time need. We'll do it, it'll be with us for a while in terms of the infrastructure, but there'll be many upgrades that'll always be required as more things are added, and more people are trying to do things, and more devices are played with. But this is a very, very good investment. So, I recommend, first of all, that you would read the executive summaries, because that gives you enough of a background to understand what's being involved. Additionally, you'll find some materials that talk about the Category 2 E-Rate funding estimates. And under this program, we can access $398,100 of federal funds with a $265,400 match. We're currently soliciting bids and completing E-Rate applications. We will seek capital funding to meet this infrastructure need in the weeks ahead. It's clear that, you know, other things need to be done in terms of devices and equipment, but that's not part of this particular activity. If we don't do it this year, I have a feeling some of the stuff may not be available to school systems or libraries next year, because of some of the domestic cutbacks that are being considered in Washington. So, I'd like to act on this now, and like to let you know that we're working actively on this. Kirstine is working closely on the financial part and on the technical part as well, with Steve Kelly of Tech Edge, and look forward to moving this forward. Happy to take any questions, and Kirstine's here as well.
Ms. Vandecoot?
Yes, that I had an opportunity to review this report in detail, and I did look at all of the findings, and although there was much that I didn't understand as, as a novice in this area, there were other parts that just make common sense, where they were talking about, you know, areas where all of a sudden it would get too, too crowded, if you would, and somehow or another, it just seemed one of the most comprehensive, and clearly, it's something we need to move ahead on. Is the next appropriate step to have a committee of the whole to review this?
Well, we can do that if you want.
Do we need to?
We certainly, you know, want to move forward, because, you know, we want to be able to file our applications and, and take advantage of bids that are out there, but if you want a committee of the whole, we can schedule it. We do, are going to have a very busy schedule in the month of May and early June, because of a number of things, including school council reports and the like, but happy to schedule it if this is what you want to do.
Personally, I'm comfortable with just moving, authorizing the administration to move ahead, if my colleagues are.
We would still have to come back for a formal vote, in any case.
Yeah.
And then send it for an appropriation paper to the City Council.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
No, I haven't.
Mr. Benedetto?
Thank you very much. So, this is the recommendation that we have to move forward, and if we move forward with this, we would need to receive $265,400 match, and we would get the four, close to $400,000.
Right.
Right. I also would like to know what we're budgeting in addition to this on an annual basis, to make sure that we're also making a commitment on a line item in our budget as well, because this, like, we did the $3 million bond a few years ago for technology, and then we had a few slow years, and then we're asking for more. What I'd like to see is a commitment to technology throughout our system, throughout every year, so that way we, we don't, you know, when these opportunities arise, it's for bonus stuff, not the everyday stuff. Do you understand what I'm saying, Superintendent?
So, what our plans are internally, and of course, we're still refining them somewhat, because we still have to figure out how much money's available to us operationally, but we will plan to buy devices with a regular budget, in addition to some of the other, you know, things we've typically done, because in order to use the network, you have to have more, more devices, and probably a lot of Chromebooks. You'll see this in the school council reports, people are asking for these things. We need them for testing, we need them for reporting, there are a few other devices we will need. But the infrastructure is something that we can bond, and the infrastructure is something that we can get E-Rate money for, and that's what we need to really go after right now, because that's the, that's money that we wouldn't typically put in our operating budget. So, yes, you'll see substantial dollars put to this, plus there's also some staff needs, and we're going to have to try and put that in place and work that around as well.
Ms. Cunio?
Okay, just point of clarification, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So, the $265,400, that comes out, that will come out of the capital plan money? That does not?
That's the plan.
Not budget, right.
That's the plan.
That is not a budget.
Kirstine, did you want to come up and comment on these things, because it's financial stuff that she's working closely with?
Thank you, yes. Just also a clarification, that we are in the process of reviewing the major procurements that are involved with the E-Rate Priority 2 funding. So, it's a substantial process, of which we have a federal deadline of May 11th. So, timing is of great importance in this particular case, to make sure that we can maximize their major matching funding piece. What we have on our procurement are the infrastructure switches, the major firewalls, and all of the wireless access points throughout the entire district. So, we are looking at analyzing the best-case scenarios that we can utilize the funds and/or maximize what the contribution will be. So, some of our bids are coming in, well, they were much better than they had been projected out from a rough calculation. So, the competitive process is definitely very good in, in terms of getting best pricing. We are seeing that, based on the quantities that are needed, and the level of extensions and infrastructure renovations that we're looking at, do cause a couple of overages in certain categories. So, we are still in the process of having that final analysis done. We're getting clarifications back from the vendors as well. So, although this is an estimated figure, I would advise that we do not hang our hat on this exact number at this point in time.
Okay, so, when is the application due?
May 11th.
May 11th, in terms of the, what we would be identifying as our project, in terms of going forward with the funding, so.
With not funding approval by May 11th?
Correct. It is not a commitment to actual, the purchasing and procurement process, but it is saying that to the federal government, yes, we are identifying that this is a priority, and we anticipate in fiscal year 18 to provide XYZ amount for this purpose.
So, when would the deadline be after this? Like, if we have, May 11th, we have, okay, everything goes through, this is us just basically saying that we are interested in this, this is what we want to do. When is the deadline? Because I just want to make sure, we have plenty of time to come back to the board here and, and take the vote the proper way, and make sure that you have enough time to get all the information you need, but if I'm not mistaken, we also have to go to the City Council.
Correct.
So, I just don't want to have another fiasco at the last, not, not that we're doing it, I'm just saying, I don't want to hear another fiasco.
Well, let's, let's go over this now, okay? The federal government, we put this report in, we put an E-Rate, you know, funding request in every year, the general E-Rate. This is Tier 2.
Okay.
Tier 1, we generally get $50,000 to $60,000. This has changed a little bit because of the change from telecommunications to other things. We generally, that's, that's independent of this, okay? Tier 2 is a special infrastructure-type funding that's designed to give us more robust capability. We'll put this in on May 11th, and then we've got to wait for the federal government to actually formally approve it, okay? But, you know, if we don't put it in on May 11th, and we don't put this in, we won't be eligible to ask for the money later on.
Right, we'll lose it.
So, the actual spending process will take place after we have a more, more of a discussion on the details.
Which is fine, and I totally understand that. I'm just trying to figure out how much time that we have from May 11th to the actual time that we have to.
Well, we're going to hold patent until we hear back from the federal government. We could go in with an estimate to the council to get the bulk. We could do that, if we wanted to just secure it.
Correct.
A little earlier than later.
Correct, so that we could actually have the work and service done, identified, and moving forward.
Ready to go.
Yes.
Because if I'm not mistaken, it has to be done also before the budget is, oh, no, because it has nothing to do with it. I apologize for that.
You just want to get an authorization to move forward if you can, because, you know, otherwise, what, you lose the opportunity to access it. And I'm willing to bet, not willing to bet, but I think it's a pretty good bet that this funding will start to disappear with the next federal budget. And I think if we don't, you know, act, we won't have this opportunity.
Ms. Mustone?
On page 16 from the back, I think-
On page 16 from the back, I think it's the easiest way to see it.
16 from the back.
Page 16 from the back.
Yep.
Okay.
So, and under traffic to and from different schools, it lists our schools and devices.
Mm-hmm.
Those are handheld devices, so we have High School 311, Andrews 239, Brooks 95, Columbus 82, McGlynn 693, and Roberts 99. So, what accounts for the, such a drastic difference in the number of devices at schools?
People using. It's used.
Correct.
It's, some places will be more technologically involved than other places.
Right, but we've always heard that the Andrews was like our IT school to go to, but this is Sabre, the McGlynn.
McGlynn is two schools in one, remember?
So, even if we cut it in half, it still seems like it's substantially more.
Yeah, well, just the way it is, I mean, some places use technology.
And it, that was the traffic for a snapshot in time, that's not in totality. So, it was a day of monitoring, so not all of your devices would be on in one particular day, not all of them would be captured for every single school. So, I, I don't think that that's a clear delineation that, that, that's the number of devices, period, in each of those schools. It's what was captured on the activity for the log that they were monitoring, the traffic across the internet connections.
Is anyone else shocked, though? I'm assuming that it's, we took a snapshot at about the same time at each school, right? People work, they probably worked seven to three in school hours. So, as a parent who's now worried about kids and their device usage at school as well as home, it seems, so the percentage-wise goes from 1% to 67%. That seems like a red flag, and I'm not an IT person, so I don't know what I'm missing.
Again, we're, we're talking about a snapshot in time, we're talking about an attempt to find out the capacity of the network to handle traffic, and, you know, it was done on a few days here and there. It can't be done every day because obviously we'd be paying, you know, a lot, a lot of money for, you know, a study that would happen every day. And it just happens this is what's coming through. So, it gives us an idea of what traffic would look like on a, maybe a normal day, but maybe it's, doesn't totally reflect every day.
It looks really low for the most part, besides the McGlynn, it looks really, really low.
Something's missing.
Point of information, Ms. Cunio.
But it also could be that the particular teacher or teacher is doing the particular project using their devices.
Correct.
So, the teachers are actually using the devices, the kids are actually doing different things online. So, I'm not saying that's what happened that day, but it could be a possibility.
But even the high school's 7% looks tremendously...
Something, could we talk to the Tech Edge people?
Yeah, we can, we can get some comment in a follow-up meeting.
Because then on page eight from the beginning, finding one, that we're paying internet connection at the high school and at the McGlynn, and I know that I have heard at the Andrews, it's very slow, their connection a lot of days. So, why isn't a finding for the Andrews as well? I guess it would have been helpful to have a Tech Edge person here.
So, we can bring them in, we can bring them in.
That might be easier, bring them to a school committee meeting versus a committee of the whole.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We can do that.
Motion to table the report until Tech Edge can come in?
We'll table it and make sure that we're...
He already applied, they already sent it.
Okay, they already did without us.
Kirstine, do you want a formal vote to submit the...
Maybe it's a good idea to let them submit.
Yes, so that we can move forward with the federal deadline.
And go over any aspect of the report.
Is there a motion to submit a formal request to the federal government?
So moved.
So moved, by Ms. Vander Pluip, seconded by Mr. Benedetto. Roll call. Ms. Cunio?
Yes.
Mr. Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. Belsin?
Yes.
Mr. Scarry? Yes, we have a question. Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes. Thank you, Kirstine. Pre-budget report, building and grounds.
So, John, where are you? Okay. Now appearing on our stage, John. You know, buildings and grounds obviously is a big area for us, and you have a lot of interest in this, and I just want to comment before John talks about his specifics, but as I told you at a prior meeting, that it's my intent to augment the building repair line by 200,000, which would then be distributed among the schools for the various projects that we've all been talking about, because quite frankly, the budget that we have will get used up for general maintenance and, and it will be used up for things that, you know, go boom in the night. So, this would give us some flexibility in doing some of the repairs. Now, the major piece for the high school, we want to see where the SOI takes us, you know, and there's some other aspects in the high school which John will address, but the SOI is what we submitted to the MSBA and see where that goes, because obviously if we get money from them, you know, that's going to be a lot bigger amount than we would be able to fund ourselves internally. So, there's a lot going on, but I wanted to have a chance to take a look at some of the things moving through this area. And John, you have your copy of your report?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so why don't you talk a little bit about what's in your report, and I'll be happy to augment it as we go.
Mr. Benedetto.
Ms. Belsen, the 200,000 that you ran into the budget this year, is that going to be annually from this point on?
Well, I don't know, I mean, we have to sit down and have that discussion. I mean, you know, I think that that particular line item should grow, whether it should grow 200,000, 300,000, or 150,000 is, you know, is something we can look at. It also depends to some degree on what else we can get funding for. So, I think the concept is to put a few more dollars in this thing so we can address very specific topics that you have an interest in, and we can do it with assurance rather than have to wait to see how many things go boom in the night, you know, which we have to deal with emergency funding, like we did, got a couple of pipes this year and the year before and so on and so forth. So, it would give us more flexibility. But how much, it really depends on, you know, the projects we identify and where we go with it.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mayor Burke, Superintendent Belsen, Committee. So, our district is 1.12, 1.2 million square feet, and we're busy, we're very busy at all times. We take, we take a lot of work orders, a lot of requests, and this year we were busy up at Metford High School with the A-building pipe replacement, which was something that we had hoped to take on with the capital plan, but it just so happened that we, we had to make the repairs. And Mayor Burke has come up with the money to replace the front doors up at Metford High School and door 31, that's the pool door, which is going to be a, a big improvement, especially where we have the new studio vestibule and matching everything up. And I think we're going to look into probably some signage too for the main entrance of Metford High School, because I think that sometimes it can be a little confusing for people when they, when they do come to the entrance. So, I think that the signage is something that, I think that we can probably work with the vocational school to get something done that will be appropriate. And everybody's had a chance to read the report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Ms. Mostone.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank John.
And I also want to thank Carolyn Montello, a mom from the Brooks, who had reached out to me with some great ideas about how to improve the facade of the high school, and we had the opportunity to meet with John and the mayor different times and Mr. Belsen. So, one concern was the pool door that whacks you when you walk in, and the staircase about trying to make that look better, and you had mentioned that you would try to get a quote for us?
Yes, well, I've been in discussions with Superintendent Belsen, and we, we're trying to come up with a plan. I have received a couple of quotes, so it'll be, it'd be, it'll just be a decision process whether we decide to move forward on it. I will recommend that we do.
Great.
And then we, maybe if we do, we can have in-house staff make some of the floor repairs that, that need to be made, but I do, I do want to get a couple, couple of more opinions or a couple more quotes to, and then see where we can go from there.
Would it be, if I could, would it be going over the asbestos?
No, I, I, I think...
Or mediation?
We've talked about the possibility of doing that, but at this point in time, it may just be better off to abate that, that area. The first quote that came in, it wasn't as much as I thought it was going to be, truthfully. So, we'll, we'll hash it out and we'll discuss it, and then hopefully if, if it works out, maybe it'll be a good summer project. We'll have to close the entrance down for a few days and work with it. And then, like I said, I think we can have our in-house staff take over after they complete.
The other was the community school entrance, when you're walking in, the blue paint and the rebar was showing in the wall.
It's been fixed.
And scaffolding.
It needs to be painted, but it's been fixed, but the scaffolding...
That's tough, yeah.
So, scaffolding, can that be done for the light fixtures that are broken in the ceiling?
The construction kids are going to do it for us. I'm hoping that they have it set up before the end of school, but either way, we'll have it set up for the summer.
On your to-do list.
Director Riccio's kids are going to set it up for us, and then we'll go up, and I'm hoping that maybe we can do some painting too in the ceiling, as well as take, take down the fans and do a couple of other things, yeah.
Should I, Carolyn, if you're watching, text me what else I'm forgetting.
You have to video that, John.
Thank you, John.
Well, she, I know that she had, she, she did have a request about the baseboard up around...
Oh, that's right.
The gymnastics area, and I had it tested, so we can remove it ourselves.
Oh, great.
So, we don't have to worry about, you know, any problems with it, it's, it's non, it's non-asbestos.
Oh, great, thank you.
We can work on that too.
Excellent, thank you, John.
You know, it, it does depend on time. Now, I did request a carpenter, but he has been around for a long time, so he does get time off in the summer, and the summer is a short window, so if he could ever, he's been around for 30 years, he does a great job, and if, if there's ever a time, maybe we can get him some help, that would be good.
That would be great.
Yeah.
How many carpenters did you used to have?
Well, I, I've been there, I've been up to high school for 30 years, so there was probably four or five of them, I think, in 1987 when they came on, so...
Now there's one.
He does a good job, he, he does a real good job. I mean, Mary Jo, our secretary, she does a fantastic, I mean, we're, we're very lucky. We have, we have some really good people, we do.
Very good. Ms. Cunio.
Thank you, just clarification, when you're talking about the pool door, are you talking about the door that actually goes up, the entrance to the pool upstairs?
Yes, the pool entrance.
No, 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 the, from the outside.
Yeah, door 31, that's the outside door that you go along the ramp and go in into the ceiling.
Oh, okay, that's the door, okay, that's, that's the door I want, okay.
Yeah.
And so, and when you were talking about the floor, were you talking about that carpet that was there for a while?
Well, we took it out, we took it out because it, it was starting to get a little bit beat up, so now we're just talking about removing the tile.
Okay.
And then we'll put brand-new tile down, and it's, with some pitches hung up inside there and some paint. So, that would be the nice finishing touch at this point.
Okay, and the other thing I want to ask is, when you were doing this report, have you had a list, or maybe, I want to call it a wish list, but over the years, we've all had the opportunity as a committee and singly to go to all the schools and see what needs to be done, what maintenance needs to be done, what needs to be upgraded? And I was just curious to know, when you wrote the report, did you have, like, the wish list from the schools?
From, from the, from the other schools, there's, I haven't really talked enough to the principals to really find out if they have anything in the wish list. Now, I know that we did have a discussion on the bleachers and, and the, in the various schools, and we did have Frank go out, and I did submit a report that we're in pretty good shape in most of the schools, but over the summer, again, it might be a good time to maybe have a company come out and replace some of the nuts and bolts that are making the, the bleachers come in and out and work and, and things like that.
Well, I mean, over the years, it's basically been to, just to make sure, like, you know, the bathrooms are back up to date, because there were a lot of things that were missing when we had walked through. The playgrounds, I know that's something that we've all looked at.
Well, we did, and that would've been, that would be probably, you know, our capital, capital wish list or improvement, even some of the paving that, that needs to be done in some of the parking lots and, and things like that, it probably would fall more into the capital, the area.
And it's, and just the, the regular maintenance that we've needed in, in general, like, keeping up with the paint, keeping up with the ceilings, keeping up with, you know, all of it.
Well, we are, you know, we're working towards it, like I said, and I've been very lucky to be able to use the Department of Corrections, and they've helped us out at the Curtis Tufts, they were at the Brooks earlier this year. I have some plans, hopefully this summer, to bring them down to the Roberts, because they had some requests, and then we'll move them, you know, if we can get them, the longer we can get them, obviously, the better, so we can keep moving around in the buildings, doing common areas, doing classrooms, doing anything. You know, and it's the same thing with the flooring, some of the flooring needs to be looked at again, and, you know, in the different classrooms, there may be some tiles popping up. But it's just part of our everyday kind of routine that we make our way around town and, and, you know, try to keep it, keep it, keep it honest, I guess you could say.
Okay, and what about the contractors that we have at the high school for the cleaning?
Prospect contractors, yeah, they've been doing a good job, they've been very...
They're the ones that we still have?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were the ones that we hired this year, they were new. We had Empire before. Now, Prospect was awarded the, the bid after we did an extensive interview process, the superintendent, there was a few of us there, and they've been doing a pretty good job, they're, they're resourceful, they, they answer the phone, they take care of our needs, you know, when we need them for extra issues, and, you know, that sometimes you have your, your regular, everyday issue, maybe something was missed or something, something else, and they're really good about responding to everything. I, I haven't had a problem with them at all. I couldn't, couldn't say that, you know, they, they haven't been good.
Thank you. Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. John, first of all, I, I want to shout out to you and to Alicia Hunt on the new lighting at the Curtis Tufts School.
Oh, Alicia does a fabulous job.
That was requested a few years ago, and that took a lot of work to get the grant and get the money, and, and all the work that's been done at that school. Don't forget to bring the prisoners back and finish the paint job there.
Well, we'll get them back in there again, and I think we're, we're going to try to knock off a couple of more of the floors down there this summer. We did make a, we did make a change, a personnel change down at that building, so I think he, he's done a very good job.
I know that they were talking about relocating some office space, and do you have any updates on that, like, where the kitchen is and the cabinets are?
Yeah, well, it's like, we're, we're going to have to get back down there again, you know what I mean, maybe we'll talk about it, you know, it's, it's funny because...
Maybe it could be a program, a program like the kitchen area for...
Yeah, like I said, we'll see what we can do, you know, you get me that carpenter.
Well, that's, that's my point. Not only do we need the cabinet, that we could also use a vocational, if, if they plan it as a project.
Sure.
So, maybe we could start now talking to the director of...
Yeah, absolutely.
And maybe have that be a work project that, throughout the city, and have our own children learning right there, and interacting with the other students that go to that school at the same time.
Yeah, whatever, whatever we could do, that'd be, that'd be fantastic, I mean, the building has come a long way in the last year or so, and, you know, we'll keep plugging away.
So, I, I support 100% your request for an additional carpenter. There's a lot of buildings and a lot of maintenance, and our buildings are aging every year, so, and as the superintendent has committed funds to maintaining and upkeeping and grading, I, I as committee member are going to support your requests that you have asked for in this budget request. I also wanted to ask you, you listed that at the Andrews Middle School, you're in need of a floor scrubber.
Yes.
Do you know how much that is?
Probably around 6,000 or so in that vicinity, maybe even a little less. We purchased one this past, past year for the Roberts, so...
Good to know, just that, because I had no idea, like, a cost value of that. So, so you need a carpenter and 6,000 in addition to the 200,000 that the superintendent is going to add to the light item, so...
Sure, we'll take whatever, whatever.
I'd love to run a poll on that one.
Whatever it is, you'll get a chance to vote on it, okay?
Yeah, very good. Thank you, John, for all your work.
Thank you.
Mayor, three to John. John, is there any chance of getting the auto body shop on your list of places to be painted? The, the ceiling in there is really, really tough, and I guess they want to replace the floor, but they don't want to do anything with the floor until the ceiling gets done but they don't wanna do anything with the floor until the ceiling gets done because they want the place to be a showcase. But it hasn't been painted, the walls have been painted, they look great, a lot of work has been done there, but the ceiling in the auto body shop is just, it's time.
Well, I can look into it, like I said, it'd probably be, you know, that's, would probably have to be sprayed.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so I can, I can certainly get a price and find out, you know, I know that the DOC wouldn't be something that they would do, you know, spraying and stuff.
Right, if you just take a look at it when you get a chance and see if we can put our heads together and come up with a solution.
Well, we use a guy to paint around the school sometimes and he's, he's pretty reasonable, he's done some work in the vocational school, so I can, I can, I can call him up and see, get a price, at the very least.
Great, good, thank you.
Ms. Vanderklug?
I think, Mayor Burke, this is actually a question for you. Earlier this year, we started out by putting together items that we thought were part of a capital improvement plan, including the edging along at the middle school complex, all of that edging along the roads that were sidewalk, which were a concern, and I think also the playgrounds, but I haven't, we're really sort of talking about individual projects again and not the capital improvement plan. Where are we on that?
We have pretty much nailed down the city side of things. We're waiting to have another committee of the whole to finalize the school side of everything, but as far as Freedom Way goes, I'm having the engineering department looking at seeing if we can create it as a public way because then it's applicable for chapter ninety funding. So I have Cassandra Kudelidis working on that as we speak, because if we can get that, then we could get that whole road done, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed.
And would a project like, I mean, again, we've, we've sort of had ongoing concerns ultimately about the play surfaces and the playgrounds, and I know that much work was done and there were patches and whatever, but, you know, it's still out there as a project which we need to take a look at, so.
The superintendent's just finishing up, he's fine tuning it.
Pretty soon.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have a citizen. Name an address for the record, please.
David McKillop, ninety-four Rock Glen Road. Good evening, everyone. I was actually at the city council meeting about the capital improvement and the SOI and we were kind of, there were some things being bantered back and forth. My question is, in the capital improvement program, is there an opportunity to usurp some of that money for maintenance for an extended amount of time?
No, capital is bondable money.
Okay.
Free cash could be used for some maintenance items or budget, but not, you can't take a loan auto out for a maintenance item.
Okay, so is there another opportunity to kind of create some sort of a bucket of money, if you will, for this?
Well, the superintendent's fine tuning the plan for the school side and once we get that, then we'll develop the dollars that are needed and then we'll try to put together the puzzle of money to pay for it.
One suggestion or one idea might be where you had done a tremendous job collecting taxes on property that did not have taxes collected on, I think it was over two point eight, two point nine million dollars this year? That may not happen every single year, but is there a possibility where we could actually take some of that instead of putting it into the general fund and applying that to the maintenance of the schools, because to be honest with you, I feel bad for John, I think he needs two carpenters. I have an eleven thousand square foot building and I could never do what he does with one person.
He does an amazing job.
It's just a suggestion, but there has to be something to take these schools to a different level because I remember I was here when we built the middle schools and we were kind of fighting, you know, we're taking them out of the neighborhoods and putting them into a general area. It wasn't about the schools that I was fighting, it was about the maintenance, because we were complaining that the older schools were not habitable. They make great condos now, but they're not habitable for schools. So here we are now fifteen, twenty years, however many years it was, and I made the same point, you know, now some of these schools need some dramatic maintenance. So you can get ten million dollars in capital improvement, but if you don't have a maintenance plan, you're gonna be that, back in the same boat ten and fifteen years from now. So you need to create a plan for this and that has to be something that has to be discussed and scrutinized and scrutinized because that money is money that's not gonna be wasted, but is certainly gonna be spent unwisely five, ten, fifteen years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the pre-budget report as reported? So moved by Mr. Benedetto, seconded by Mr. Scarry, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Report on state proposed budget for the fiscal year eighteen, Mr. Superintendent.
So, this is a good opportunity for me to wrap a few things together and also talk about some of the things that just came up. The Massachusetts House of Representatives passed its initial version of the FY two thousand eighteen state budget last Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. The House version will now go to the State Senate for their deliberations, ways and means, and then the floor, and we would expect the Senate version to emerge sometime in late May. Since there will be differences between the two legislative bodies, there will be a joint conference committee consisting of three members from each chamber and they'll try to reconcile their differences and then go to the full body in each chamber to get an up or down vote. They can't make changes once it comes out of conference committee. Then the changes, once it comes out from the full legislature, will go to the governor, the governor undoubtedly will veto some line items, the legislature historically will override most of his vetoes, give or take a few here and there, and the state budget should be completed sometime by the end of May, however, end of June, rather. However, you know, we have to start doing our budgets well in advance of that, so we start to look at what the House and the Senate will do because typically they're pretty good guidelines as to what will happen, but, you know, we don't know. The Senate tends to be a little bit more financially generous than the House, although items vary from area to area. For the first time, the initial budget from the House exceeds forty billion dollars. It's actually less than what the governor proposed, slightly, but it still exceeds forty billion dollars to support the various line items and any new programs and services, but most of the new money goes to mass health, pensions, and a modest increase in local aid.
Limited.
Very limited, okay, and we'll go into some of that in a way, but forty percent of the budget typically or more right now is mass health. So that gives you an idea of, you know, it may be forty billion dollars, but so much of it is eaten up by certain entitlements that there isn't a lot of discretionary funding. So the main limitation on the budget is the availability of money to support the various line items, any new programs and services, just like we're talking about right now. How much money is going to be available to do all the things that you think should be done? Most of the new money, as I say, goes for certain items. During FY two thousand sixteen, the state found the budget was initially short four hundred and fifty-five million dollars. In this year, revenue as the end of March is running two hundred and twenty million below estimates. April receipt should be higher, April's usually a very good month, beginning of the month was good, but until we get the final figures, we don't know, but typically, we should be able to close a good portion of that gap, but closing that gap doesn't give us any surplus, doesn't give any excess, it just gives us a gap close, and there's no guarantee that, you know, how much money will come in actually in June and May and June. Originally, the projection for this year was a three point one percent growth factor at the state level and through March, it's one point seven percent, gives you an idea. And that's nationally too, two percent growth is sort of like, you know, a hallmark. A study by the Federal Reserve explained that while Massachusetts unemployment was down, there was a significant drop in wages and hours worked, and that means that the overall personal income was lower. Spending was higher, most notably in the health sector. Additionally, a sales tax on merchandise was affected by increased online buying, for which there's no tax. Furthermore, it's impossible that the income tax rate will drop again because of the automatic trigger built into the state. The drop in the income tax cost the Commonwealth over a billion dollars a year since that trigger was put in place. There appears to be an appetite, no appetite for increased taxation, although there may be some proposal out of the Senate as Senate President Rosenberg seems to put this forward a little bit, although tax proposals have to emanate from the House first. Lastly, we can expect some cutbacks from Washington on domestic spending, including various education items. So the following items are things to think about in the House budget, and again, they haven't printed the whole House budget, so I can't get every nickel and dime figured out a hundred percent, but I've gone behind the numbers as much as I can. Chapter seventy is thirty dollars per pupil in the House budget. Last year was fifty-five dollars per pupil. The governor is proposing twenty dollars per pupil. That's approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Unrestricted municipal aid is up statewide by forty million, but when it's distributed, it isn't that much. The special education circuit breaker was level funded in the House budget. It could be short somewhere between ten and fifteen million dollars for full funding and as more students qualify, there's greater demand on this account. We're projecting less funding in fiscal two thousand seventeen, the year we're in there in two thousand sixteen, we've already given you some of those numbers in the last financial report, and there could be a further reduction in fiscal two thousand eighteen, and that's for extraordinary special ed costs, so you have to pay attention to that. Charter school funding is level funded. We expect the statewide entitlement to be sixty million below need, maybe more, depending on how much expansion. Depending on the number of students who opt for charter schools, we could see an increase in our local cost, although I think we've leveled it pretty well and we're bringing people back, but we also know that Washington is very heavy on pro-choice with Secretary DeVos and we'll see what comes out of there for the choice issues in support of charter schools. Homeless transportation is level funded, fifty percent of what we think entitlement would be, if that. No funding, new funding came back for kindergarten, we lost a hundred and forty-three thousand last year and there's nothing in that line item this year. Out-of-district, non-resident transportation is cut, could lose about thirty thousand dollars in that particular line item, and there's no new funding for technology that we've seen outside of what I presented this evening. We will be able to get some significant federal dollars, as I explained. The Department of Public Health funding should be reasonably stable, that funds a nurse and some of the work that's done on health prevention. Early childhood funding through the grant account is expected to lose thirty percent of current level as priorities shift from programs to workforce development support, in other words saying, increasing the salaries of people in the nonprofit sector and providing additional training for them because they're well underfunded and it's certainly a worthy priority, but, you know, they didn't say we'll do both, they said we'll do, we'll take the money from the programs and move it over there. So there's a little bit more there, but it's not, it's not clear. So, we just got through talking a little bit about maintenance and things of that type. There's a finite pot of gold out there and you just can't say we'll just do everything. We'll try to provide you with options across the board so you can select and hopefully we'll continue to search out new sources of funding like we have with the vocational school and other things and opiate prevention to augment what we have, but the general distributions coming from the state place a tremendous burden on the locality. The cost of healthcare keeps going up and we just don't know, you know, where it's coming, we don't know what Washington's gonna do and what's gonna happen to that situation yet. It goes back and forth, and there are a lot of other factors that have to come into play. So, we also have to carry at least a two point five percent increase in salary negotiations, which isn't outrageous, but it's money, you know, and then you also have step increases that people who are, you know, starting, the young teachers move up the steps, that's on top of the two point five. So there's a lot of factors. It's, it would be easy for me to get up and say, sure, tell me whatever you want me to fix, tell me whatever you want me to do, go add this, add that, it's not that simple and you know it. You know, what it is, is that we have to lay it all out and decide what's most important to us and move forward with that. I think there's a lot of great things going on in this community and a lot of great things going on in the school system. You should be very proud of the work you've done, very proud of the administration in City Hall supporting us, however, you know, there will be some limitations and we'll have to make some tough choices, forced choices, so the budget process is beginning at the State House. We'll keep watching the Senate, we'll go up in lobby, you know, for other things, we'll talk to people about things, we'll look for additional grants, look for additional revenue. We've recaptured some revenue through the Minuteman activity, the revenue coming in through the vocational school, but still, it's gonna be spread out, so just wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the state budget so far, we'll keep you posted and we'll keep talking budget as we go forward and try to set priorities.
Ms. Ma Stone?
Mr. Velson, can you just explain the out-of-district, non-resident transportation could lose about thirty thousand, so who does that transport?
Okay, that's the Minuteman bus.
Okay.
So, in another year from now, we won't have a bus going to Minuteman. We're gonna try and get a smaller vehicle, which may cost less, but if I lose the reimbursement for non-resident, last year, two years ago was over almost three million, then it went down to half of that, and this year in the House budget, it's two hundred and fifty thousand for that line item.
So how many students are at Minuteman right now?
This year, there's about sixteen students, next year, I would expect eight.
Oh, they could fit in my van, I'll take them in my van.
You could do it. Get you licensed.
So, you know, hey, listen, if you can't go one way, we'll must own the other way, okay? How's that? Okay?
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Vanderklug?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for your report. You touched on possible federal impacts and of course, that picture is not clear to us at this time. However, today, the National School Boards Association did send out an alert because of the concern about the legislation to repeal and replace the Affordable Care Act and the impact on Medicaid funding for public school students. If passed, at this point, it would limit Medicaid funding and it says the impact, the ability of students with disabilities and students in poverty to receive critical necessary health services in public schools. The legislation will require schools to compete for limited Medicaid funding and result in the institution of arbitrary caps on how much Medicaid reimbursements are made to public schools. Again, this would be another area where, I know that money comes back to the city, but it's another place where we would find a loss.
It impacts the pie, the pie of revenue.
It impacts the pie. They urge us to call our House of Representative people, of course, we understand where they already sit in our state, however, I did want to bring it to your attention.
No, it's definitely an issue. Just so you know, the Medicaid funding is generated by students who are eligible through disabilities and the like. The money comes back, Short Collaborative is our broker, if you will, it comes back through it, but it goes into the city treasury and as the mayor points out, it adds to the total pie that's then available for redistribution to the schools, to the city and other things, so it's factored into the overall who gets what kind of thing. You know, there's some people that say they want it to come to them, but quite frankly, it's the same pot of gold, we just simply work with it. But it could be four, five hundred thousand dollars that we could lose and the state could lose that much more because they're dependent on it as well and that could drive the cost of healthcare right through the roof, which would also impact our employees as they have to pay more for health insurance and the like, and of course, that would bring them to the bargaining table because next year, while we're covered for next year, bargaining for successor contracts will start all over again and as they lose money in terms of, you know, the healthcare costs and things of that type, they're gonna be looking for something to make it up in salary. So all this stuff has triggers that, you know, have gotta be thought about, planned, we gotta understand what it means. You know, when we commit something going forward, we gotta realize it might have ripple effect multiple years down the road. It's not just, you know, any one year, it's that year maybe, but then there's more going on down the road. And as it stands now, we're, you know, we're using a lot of generated revenue to support our operations. At some point in time, that generated revenue will hit a wall, we only make so much at any given time. So, there's all kinds of issues, but Washington, you know, is a real black hole, you really don't know, a lot of the programs, Title II is a hundred and fifty thousand go into salaries, that could disappear, you know, for class size reduction, other programs like that for supplies, materials, bilingual, EEO money could come down and as you can see, our population's significantly growing in that area. I think, you know, I think the issue of, and I know it's unpopular, the millionaire's taxes out there someplace, whether that actually goes through in a year from now, certainly would be helpful to the revenue pie, but then again, if that money gets generated, who will get it? The issue of any money generated through the marijuana bill, sales taxes, other things like that, all up in the air. There's a whole group out there that wanna cut the sales tax, you know, wanna bring it back down again. So, there's a lot of discussions that are going on right now and, you know, we've gotta balance it all, so, you know, I love it when people come up and say we need this and need that and I, you know, and I really respect that because they're telling, they're advocating for what they want and that you should, but then our job becomes how to balance it out, how to do as much as we can and fairly apportion it to the things that, you know, that are important to us.
Mr. Benedetto?
I just wanted to touch base on what my colleague was talking about, because I do mass health billing for the school I work at, and that's actually for speech therapy, physical therapy, occupational therapy, that's refunding for those services that we provide students and instead of them going back to their doctor's office or outpatient visits, we do them in the schools and we have those people in the schools so that they can not only help the children that specifically we need it, but they're in the schools so they help all children. And when we don't receive those fundings, we're less likely to have funds to employ those type of people in our school systems and it does matter. and it does matter, so I don't think people realize it when you're just talking about funding being cut, unless you tell them how it affects our children every day, and, and the development and growth that people make early in their lives with OT, with speech, and the abundance of, of how quickly they learn and no longer need those services because they get them well, um, and if you treat, treat well and treat, treat early is how I look at things, and then you don't have to treat later, you know, because you have the skills, you have, you've mastered some of those skills, so you no longer need those services, but I just wanted it to be relatable, it, it matters to our children, it matters not only in dollars to our city, but it matters to services among our children, and that's what we're here for.
Very good, is there a motion to accept this report and place it on file?
Yes.
So moved, seconded by Ms. Kreutz, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Negotiations and legal matters, none?
Right.
On the back, we have school committee resolution, be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Irene Haggy, Mrs. Haggy was the mother of Carolyn Haggy, former administrative assistant to the superintendent and secretary to the school committee, and we have another item in the addendum, be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Ahmed Azizi, Mr. Azizi was a former Medford Public Schools custodian, if you could all please rise for a moment of silence. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Ms. Van de Cluut?